I would like to call to order the January 9th, 2018 meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Harwich, Massachusetts. I would like to notify everybody in the room that this meeting is being recorded by the town, both in audio and video, and that any person who is intending to record either video or audio of this meeting, if they would just please inform the board prior to doing that recording. So with that, I would like to start this evening by informing everybody that Charlene has now been appointed as the new town planner for the Town of Harwich, and I would like to congratulate Charlene on that appointment, and I would like to state for the entire board that we are really looking forward to working with her over the coming years.
Same here.
Thank you. With that said, we'll get into business. The first item on the agenda is an informal discussion with Outer Cape Health Care with regard to a proposal that they would like to have an informal discussion with us about. So is there somebody here representing Outer Cape Health Care? If you could please come to the table and speak into the mic and identify yourself for the record, please.
There's a tripod over there.
Yeah, I'll grab the easel for you. Thank you.
Yes, as I am yawning my...
I'm so sorry.
It's my way.
Oh, jeez. You're okay?
Just getting done.
A blast from the past.
Ready to sit or hang because of the mic was refereeing.
Okay.
And literally everything up to that point was perfect.
You seem well enough.
I just started the microwave for three minutes.
If anybody in the audience wants to relocate in order to better see the board, please feel free move over to the other side and maybe pull the chairs forward a little bit so that you're able to see the presentation that's being made.
You're good?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your patience for us to get it set up. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Liza Cox. I'm an attorney with Nutter McLennan &amp; Fish in Hyannis, and I'm here this evening on behalf of Outer Cape Health Services. We really appreciate you hearing us on an informal discussion basis. What I'd like to do is introduce the folks that are here on behalf of Outer Cape, briefly walk you through the property which you're probably pretty familiar with, have Pat Nadel, who's the CEO of Outer Cape, share a few words about what Outer Cape does and why this location is important to them, describe the proposed project, and then I'll briefly highlight the relief that we will be requesting from you, not tonight. We have filed for formal review and are scheduled for your February 13th agenda for a public hearing, but certainly welcome any questions, comments, suggestions, input that you want to share with us to help us organize and guide our presentation more formally before you next month. So joining me this evening is Pat Nadel. As I mentioned, she is the CEO for Outer Cape Health Services. Ed McManus, who you probably all know very well, who's on the Board of Directors for Outer Cape, is also here. To my left is Virginia Branch. You'll hear from Virginia this evening as well. She's the architect for the project from DBW Architects. And John Bologna, who's a professional engineer from Coastal Engineering, is also here if you have any questions for him. We did submit a letter dated December 19th, which hopefully you guys have had a chance to review. It sort of outlines the project, and we'll walk through what's contained in that letter this evening. The property, which is the subject of what will be before you in February, is 710 Route 28. It's the former Thompson's Market property, also used by back office associates. It's also, I've heard, been called the Kennedy Building. It's had various names over the years. It's shown on the plan to my left on the board. We've highlighted, or I've highlighted in blue, the boundaries of the property. It's about almost two acres, 1.9, two acres of land. There's frontage, as you can see, on both Route 28 and Hoyt Road. It's developed with a building, two-story building, about 32,000 square feet that was constructed in circa 1989. The majority of the property is in the CV zoning district. There's a small portion to the north that's in the RR zoning district. On the site plan to my left, I've highlighted where that zoning boundary is so you can see how it affects the site. The property's also in a floodplain district, the AE floodplain, and there are numerous site improvements that are on the property now which have been permitted, including septic systems, utilities, stormwater drainage, landscaping. There are 94 parking spaces existing. There's primary access egress off of Route 28, and then there's a secondary gated emergency-only egress access onto Hoyt Road. Both of those points of access will be maintained as they are, proposed to be maintained as they are now. In other words, the primary access will be and continue to remain off of Route 28. The site is attractively landscaped. There's perimeter landscaping, and there are interior landscape islands as well. The site has the benefit of many existing permits. They're outlined in the letter that I submitted. I won't go through all of them. The ones that I think are probably the most relevant are in 1989, this project received a special permit from the zoning board. At the time, under your bylaw, that was the permit granting authority for construction of a new commercial building in over 7,500 square feet. So that's the permit that authorized the original construction that's on the site right now. In 1990, the zoning board again reviewed the property, granted a variance for the width of the curb cut, which again is not proposed to be changed with this project. In 1991, the zoning board again reviewed the site and granted a special permit and a variance which allowed for a reconfiguration of the parking, including having parking in the residential, commercial parking in the residential portion of the property, as you can see exists on the plan to my left. That relief also allowed for excess site coverage and also for non-conforming parking lot islands. The first time it looks like this board looked at the site was in August of 1991, shortly after the zoning board had issued that last decision wherein this board approved the redesign of the parking, and then also a couple of small additions to the building. And then the most recent decision for the property, which was again via this board, was in May of 2015, which allowed a mobile food truck to operate periodically on the site, and some of you may recall having been a part of that review process. The property, as you may know, is owned by Building Down the Road LLC, which purchased the property in 2008. Building Down the Road LLC and Outer Cape Health Services have entered into a lease agreement, so Outer Cape has standing to make a request to the town for their use at the site. It's a 10-year lease with Outer Cape having two 10-year options, so up to 30 years of a lease agreement on the site. The building, as I mentioned, is two floors, and Outer Cape has been occupying the second floor since March of last year for office use. They have their call center, their finance department, their billing department, their IT department, and various administrative office uses have been occupying the building. What Virginia will describe in a few minutes is their proposed fit-out work within the first floor of the building, which is what will trigger the filing that we'll have before you in February. But before I ask Virginia to do that, I'd like to ask Pat if she'd come up and just say a few words about the organization, the work they do in the community, and why we think this is such an important and beneficial project to the Town of Harwich from a mission perspective.
I just want to be sensitive to the microphone. Would that, is that microphone on? Would that be easier?
Yeah.
And again, I'd like to echo Liza's comments about how much we appreciate your time and your guidance as we move through this process, so hopefully we can complete our hope for additional access for health care in the community, this community and the surrounding communities. We have been in, our current health center is on Chatham Road, has been there about six years. It's a very small, we call it Grandma's Cottage. It's a five-room health center, which has, believe it or not, last year had 13,000 visits. So it's amazing what you can sort of facilitate when you need to do that. However, we have a long waiting list. We have, we're watching providers in the communities either leaving and not being recruited back, another replacement. We have aging of our providers. We have other providers who no longer take certain insurances, and so we're now getting 20 or more calls a day from other individuals in this community and in surrounding immediate communities for access to health services. So this is an incredibly important project to be able to help serve that need. We are currently, and I want to make sure that as Virginia goes through the project, I will also say that we are really working very diligently with other community agencies to help provide space and/or access to services through an easy facilitation of referrals. I want to, I made a comment at the Planning Board meeting last month about our partnership with the food pantry, which I think is really important. We are exploring, and we have another conference call tomorrow, where folks who should be accessing the food pantries most oftentimes do not. What we're finding very successful is what's called a prescriptive pantry, where our providers, our doctors and our nurse practitioners, mid-level providers write an actual prescription for the pantry. We will have what's called starter boxes. So we'll have a box for a diabetic. We'll have a box for someone who has congestive heart failure. We'll have a box for folks who are in emergency need for food. So they will take the prescription to a location within our setting in this new site to be able to fill that, and then we'll immediately refer them to the pantry, so that hopefully that connection will, what we're seeing outside the Cape that, for communities who are doing that, is that they're actually seeing a much better use and access of folks going to the pantry because their doctor told them they needed to. So just, it'll be new for the Cape, and we are looking to start here in this, in this community, and then expand it to our other sites so that all folks will have the advantage now, right now. So we are really, we're planning, we're excited to present the project to you this evening. We have, again, the need is great, and we are in the process of hiring new providers who will be starting with us. One started yesterday, and two more will be starting over the next nine months so that we're positioning ourselves to be able to staff the new location with new providers who will also provide not only space but medical care, too. So thank you very much.
Sure.
Will I be able, will you be able to pick me up on the mic if I'm back here?
No.
Okay. Well, I'll, let me just put these up and then I'll sit back down.
We can make it work.
Okay.
Make it work.
I'll just hold it. Okay. You don't have to hold the cord, but you will have to hold the microphone. Thank you. Well, I'm going to put this up here.
Hello, I'm Virginia. The project is essentially an interior retrofit of an existing building. We'll be building out a portion of the first floor to accommodate Outer Cape Health Services' space. We needed to make an accessible entrance to the building. The existing finished floor is one step up, so we came up with a very simple solution to actually raise the patio, the existing patio that's at the front, to create a ramp up so that we can come in level to the finished floor of the building. And then we are restriping some of the existing parking spaces to make an accessible route, improved accessible route for an increased number of handicap parking spaces. And the other site impact that we have is an existing recessed loading area back here. We've, we're actually going to fill that in to create a docking bay for an ambulance, which also can serve as other loading and trash areas, some of the utilitarian aspects of the functions that weren't accommodated in the building. And the only other move that we're making outside is creating an egress path from two existing emergency egress stairs that comes around the building. We're eliminating one patio here, and by doing these, making these changes, we're actually net zero to slightly improved on permeable surfaces on the site. I can move on to floor plan. The existing floor plan at the first floor is open. There's no existing partitions left anymore. The only, the only remnants that we're reusing are the existing stairs that come from the second floor where Outer Cape now has their offices, and an existing elevator shaft where we're, which we're removing. It's a loading elevator and replacing with a passenger elevator so that now the building, both floors will be accessible. I can't do this with one hand. I believe you are all provided with reduced floor plans, but I can walk you through, this is the new, the entrance that I described earlier that's now accessible and level into a waiting area and reception, and we're utilizing what's existing, a large expanse of existing windows on the front of the building as the main circulation throughout the building and trying to bring, bring light into public areas. And it's, it's simple. It's really, we're thinking of this as two pods of health care, you know, doctor-centered with, help me, the number of exam rooms.
Eight exam rooms.
Eight exam rooms.
And one behavioral health.
One behavioral health room. We also have a pharmacy, which is really just for patients coming in for visits. It's not meant to be a retail pharmacy. We have a laboratory that, again, is primarily meant for patients within the center. And then this, I showed you earlier, this is the ambulance entrance, which can also serve as an accessible entrance to get to the second floor back here. One, one other feature that we've addressed with design is that the finished floor of the building is in the floodplain, and so our approach has been to dry floodproof the building by making alterations to the foot of the building that can help protect against a storm surge. So what we're, what we're planning to do, we know that there, a number of these windows are already beyond repair, so we're planning to replace the knee wall that's below them with a block wall and add a lining to the interior face of the block and aligning atop the existing slab and then place a new topping slab on that. So we're raising the finished floor up a little bit, but we have head height issues that don't allow us to, to raise it above the designed floodplain. But by, we think by protecting the bottom three feet of the building with, with masonry and then protecting door openings with floodgates that we're actually providing a pretty secure environment for floodproofing. We've, we're also planning some minor alterations to the facade as I speak about the elevations along Main Street here, where we had originally this continuous band of windows. We're reducing the windows down to something that's more appropriate for patient rooms along this wall, but focusing replacement of windows and improvement of siding here in the waiting room and around the end of the building into the main entrance.
Thank you. A couple of things, just adding on to Virginia, that have been questions that have been asked of us as we've met informally with various town staff and other individuals. Virginia mentioned there's a new ambulance area where people can be picked up from the facility. Just to be clear, no ambulances will drop people at this facility, so it's only if there's something happens within the facility and someone needs to be transported to the hospital. So that's the idea with the ambulance parking area. Another question that's come up as we've met with folks is, will you be providing urgent care here? And Outer Cape is not proposing urgent care at this facility. As I mentioned, we have had several informal and sort of pre-permitting meetings. We've met with the town department head staff. We've had individual meetings with the Board of Health Agent, with the town planner. We actually met with Ally before she left, and then Charlene and I have spoken and met to go over the project as well. Outer Cape's appeared informally before the Board of Selectmen, recognizing this is a project of community interest, and so they've met twice informally with the Board of Selectmen to update them on the project. And obviously, we're meeting informally with you tonight. In terms of sort of formal permitting, we have filed with the Conservation Commission because the site is within land that's subject to coastal storm flowage. The minor site work that Virginia described do require a filing with Conservation, and we have a hearing with them next week on the 17th relative to that application. And of course, we'll be before you formally on February 13th. The relief that we're asking for, that we'll review in more detail on the 13th, our site plan special permit with some waivers, and I'll, I want to talk about one of those a little bit tonight to get some feedback from you. And then a special permit for the medical clinic use. It's an allowed use, a by right allowed use in the zoning district, but because the use will occupy more than 7,500 square feet of floor area, that requires a special permit under your bylaw, so that's also what we've applied for. I think the one waiver that we're asking, which I'd like to just raise with you tonight, a couple waivers, two of them I would, I would classify as very minor, but the one that I think we'll probably have some discussion is a parking waiver. So if you look at the floor plan, there's one thing I wanted to point out. You'll see there's an area designated as future. Outer Cape is not seeking to fit out or permit that space at this point. It's about 3,200 square feet, about 3,200 square feet of future use. So as part of any approval, and this is outlined in the formal filing, we would agree that we would come back to the Planning Board before occupying or fitting out that future use. So at this stage, we're only looking to permit the two pods and the work that's shown on the floor plans. When we applied, well, first of all, as you probably are aware, your zoning bylaw gives the Planning Board the authority to vary the required number of parking spaces as part of your site plan special permit review, and the language in your zoning bylaws says if the nature and scale of a proposed use warrant such a change. And we're going to be asking you in February to exercise your discretion and authority under that section to grant some relief from the required parking spaces. When we applied a strict application of your zoning bylaw requirements to both the second floor and the first floor, we came up with a total of 162 parking spaces being required. There are 96 that are proposed on the site. One big, I think the biggest variance is how the office space is calculated under your bylaw. So your bylaw has a category for office space, which we applied to the second floor, which is being used as office space by Outer Cape. And under your bylaw, it's professional or administrative office, bank or other financial institution, and general business office. So that's sort of the general category, and then it requires you to do a calculation based on the number of employees at a maximum shift plus also a category, a ratio based on the amount of floor area that's devoted to that use. And I think what the bylaw is intending to get at with that calculation is the type of office use that has employees and also sees a regular amount of visitors, clients, guests, like you would at a bank or a lawyer or if you have a financial advisor, that fall under that umbrella of general office use or bank use under that category, based on how Outer Cape is using that office space. However, they aren't seeing clients and guests and customers in the same way that the, I think the bylaw envisions with that office category, which, when you add in the square foot calculation under the bylaw, that's an additional 48 parking spaces that we don't think are needed. And in fact, Outer Cape has, since they've been using the space over a period of time, been doing their own sort of informal parking survey to understand how their office space is actually occupying the parking spaces, and they've been doing it over, I guess, over a month now, three times a day, so that they get kind of a broader cross-section of how the parking lot is currently being used. And what they found is that the average parking space usage is between the high 20s and low 30s associated with the office use. So one of the things we'll be asking you to do is use your discretion to allow for just the office calculation, parking, parking ratio based on the maximum number of employees that are on a shift in that office space, which is 36. So dedicate 36 parking spaces to the office space. Take that out of the 162 if we do the strict application, and that leaves us shy about 18 parking spaces. We have been looking at ways to incentivize particularly in the summer when it's the busiest time, incentivize employees to carpool, ride-share, to reduce parking spaces, parking usage on the site. In addition, one of the things that Outer Cape does here is almost all of the patients are seen by appointment. There's a few slots they leave open for walk-in, but they have to actually schedule an appointment to come in to meet with a provider, and so they have the ability to control usage by appropriately scheduling appointments if it feels like the parking demand is getting high. And then, as I said, the third sort of component with that is agreeing not to occupy in any way that future use, roughly 3,200 square feet of future use, unless and until we came back to the Planning Board for a further review of how the site's been operating and how, I think parking is probably the, will be the major concern, and we'd have more information at that point before we sought to occupy that additional space. The other waivers are relatively minor relating to loading requirements and some of the interior landscaping, which is already a non-conforming condition on the site. So I'm going to pause. We've thrown a lot at you. Happy to answer and answer any questions, and truly welcome any, any feedback or comments that you may have.
Okay, Joe, before we get to questions from members of the board, I would just like to ask Charlene whether she's had any opportunity to do a staff analysis of the proposal as yet?
I haven't yet because this was an informal discussion.
Correct, yeah.
But I have been involved in several of the, the staff meetings that were held to review this, and most recently, Liza and I sat down to, to review the application when she submitted it. And I think that the analysis that they're doing regarding the parking is a really good one. I think they really thought it out and, and, you know, broke it out to the realization of what they actually do need in looking at the strict interpretation of parking for the offices. It far exceeds what they need for their second floor. So I, you know, I'm glad that they looked at that, and I'm also glad that they're looking, especially in the summertime, doing some other kind of incentive for parking and, you know, carpooling and perhaps parking off-site and shuttling or what have you, particularly in the summer months, because I think those are going to be the most angst times for, for parking in, in that area.
Thank you, Charlene. I, I think the one question that I had also relates to the parking and to the analysis that you're doing, which we're hoping that you'll share with us when you come in for the, the formal approvals. Is the analysis that you're doing, taking a look at your, the totality of your parking demand? You spoke about the office component, but, you know, there's also the patient component, and, you know, depending on how that flows, there may or may not be sort of a trade-off between those two uses. There also may be some... There also may be some serious problems with regard to the patient usage. So I guess my general question right now is is your parking analysis going to address that?
Yes, so we did include, and I can hand it up if you'd like at this point, I don't know, I mean, this is obviously something that we'll want to get some feedback on, and we understand will be subject to a lot of discussion at the formal. I can hand in the parking calculation if you'd like to take a look at that, so you have it in front of you tonight. This was included in the formal filings.
Thank you.
So it does take into consideration waiting area space. This is all directly from your zoning bylaw, how they require medical uses to calculate their amount of parking. So it's based on employees and capacity for patients, so spaces where patients are seen and/or are waiting.
So not to get too deeply into this at this point, but this is the grand total of 162, and you said there were 90 some available?
96.
But this is also the calculation based on the current zoning ordinance, which you're going to be asking for a waiver from with regard to the office component?
With regard to the project, but I think one of the biggest waiver, if you look at the sort of bottom half of that sheet, you'll see it says second floor business offices. And there, as I mentioned, there are, the bylaw requires that you calculate that, the aggregate of employees plus the square footage of area. So it's the 36 plus 48, which we think is way in excess for that aspect of the parking calculation. Even if you take the 48 out, we're still short about 18 spaces. But again, I think with incentives, with possibility for off-site for employees, with the ability to handle scheduling, and also, this parking calculation assumes that the medical pods are fully staffed and fully occupied at any one time, which is not always going to be the case. So it's sort of the maximum worst-case scenario, if you will, as it relates to the medical component. I think there are ways that we're hoping to make you all feel comfortable through scheduling, through potentially off-site locations, and particularly given that this is really a small period of time when they'll be at peak demand, that we can find a way to get relief from those additional 18 spaces.
Okay, thank you. So what I would encourage you to do when you come in for the formal presentation, as you discussed, if you could, you know, present your alternative suggestions with regard to how you're going to make up those 18 spaces. I mean, I think from the point of view of this board, we're more interested in how you're going to do that physically as opposed to administratively. Because I think you're going to be asking for waivers from us.
That's correct.
We're not going to be controlling your administrative procedures. So I think we would like to see how you would handle that physically when you do the presentation.
Right.
Okay, any other questions from the board, Joe?
I have a way to answer it, and it's very simple. Right across the street, there's going to be a public parking space, a large public parking space.
Right.
And I don't think there's any rules that say because you're running a facility like this, you can't park over there.
That's right, yep.
So, I mean, I had this in my mind coming here tonight. It seems to me that your employees come to work in the morning, and they put their car over in the public parking space, and your problem, your issues are resolved. I have a different question, though. This front wall that you're concerned about with the floodplain zoning issue, is that going to be a separate wall or it's the existing building?
Right, so our plan is because there's been water infiltration at the windows, and we presume there's going to be some rot, and we know we're replacing all the windows, so it seemed fairly simple to remove the windows, remove the wall below the windows, replace the wall below the windows with block, and then put new windows on top. Everything will still be covered with shingles, it's not going to become a block building, we'll still clad. Actually, most of the building is already block behind cedar shingles. So there's only maybe a third of the building that we're actually going to have to alter this way, and it's conveniently where we wanted to do some work anyway.
And your representation is that addresses any potential flooding?
It's allowed, I mean, John may have to jump in and help me with some verbiage, but maybe, why don't we let John? John's our civil engineer and structural engineer.
John, could you just introduce yourself for the record, please?
Yeah, for the record, John Bologna, Coastal Engineering. Yeah, since it's a commercial building, ASE 24, which is the regulations that covers design of structures within the flood zone, does allow what's called dry proofing the building. So essentially, you create a ship's hub, if you will, a hull of a ship. So what's being proposed now, the existing finished floor is at elevation 10, the base flood elevation is 11, and there's an additional one foot of freeboard required, so the designed flood elevation is 12. So essentially, you've got to elevate the finished floor above that designed flood elevation, and as Virginia had mentioned earlier, it's not practical to raise the first floor of that building, because you wouldn't have the headroom inside. So in lieu of doing that, essentially providing a barrier all the way around the building, you know, bathtub, and so by virtue of the fact that most of the buildings are all concrete block, this one section that Virginia's referring to in the front of the building is wood frame, that's going to be removed, and a skirt essentially built all the way around the perimeter waterproofed, as well as the first floor waterproofed, and then a topping slab put over that. So the only place where water can come in would be technically through the doorways, and then there's, flood barriers are being proposed at the doorway locations. So, and that's all permitted by the flood code.
And just one last thing, you didn't introduce him, and I think the record should reflect that Mr. McManus is in attendance this evening and part of your group.
They did do that.
They did.
I didn't think they did introduce him.
Yeah, they did.
Yep.
Okay. Hi, mister.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Before we go on to questions from other members of the board, I'd just like to make a comment with regard to Joe's comment on parking and the availability of some parking across the street. As you probably know, there's a lot going on across the street, and there's a lot of changes going on across the street. So if that becomes part of your solution, we're going to have to consider that in conjunction with all the other competing demands for parking in that location before we could grant a waiver based on that type of solution.
Okay.
Okay? Other member, Mary?
I just have one question. Is your facility going to be seven days a week, or is it primarily Monday through Friday?
Through Friday.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from any members of the board?
Just one other last. You have, on your second floor, you currently have administrative staff, are they just dealing with this location or all of your locations?
They deal with all of the locations, they are a large area.
A large area on the second floor is now called our access center. They, if you call any of our site numbers for an appointment, it automatically loops into that site on the second floor, so they're doing all our scheduling, our medical records functions, they're doing all our referral functions, and then we move into the billing functions and the rest of the financial requirements for the organization. So that site handles all of the other two sites.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for members of the board? Seeing none, are there?
Do you want to check with Jim?
Oh, I'm sorry. Jim, this is Jim Joyce, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions, no comments, bye.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, now I'd like to open it up to see if any members of the public who are here tonight have any questions or comments that they would like to ask, or comments that they would like to make. Okay, seeing none, I would like to thank you for your presentation, and we'll look forward to seeing you in February.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, I'll allow you a minute in order to clear, and then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Okay, I think I can start moving on to the next item on the agenda as they finish clearing away their information. The next item on the agenda is a discussion of possible zoning items that would be potentially submitted to town meeting later this spring. The first one is one that we have discussed numerous times before with regard to the Port Village District. As you may remember, prior to Ally leaving, we had reviewed this with the board, we had come together and made some decisions with regard to the zoning, and sort of got the consensus of the board that they were in favor of proceeding with this. Ally very wisely submitted it to our town attorney for review to make sure that, you know, that the components of the zoning ordinance were going to be acceptable and could pass attorney general review. We have received a memorandum back from Adam Costa, who is the town attorney on planning board issues, and Adam has raised a few concerns that I think we do need to address prior to proceeding any further with this matter. Now, I don't know what the desire of the board is tonight, whether we want to discuss those concerns tonight, whether I would be willing to get together maybe with Charlene sometime prior to the next meeting to see if we could come up with a proposal to address those concerns. So what's the desire of the board tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I think maybe we have a little discussion.
That's fine.
And we're not going to vote anything.
No, we're not going to vote anything tonight. I, okay, well, then let's have some, has everybody had a chance to review Adam's comments? Okay, does anybody have any issues or comments?
What are his issues? I read them, and I...
Well, his issues seem, to me, the two main issues seem to be the ability to change dimensional requirements in site plan review, which...
To waive items.
Yeah, to waive, to waive various site...
Parking is one thing, but dimensional requirements are significantly different.
Dimensional requirements, right, in site plan review.
If I may, under the...
Yeah, go ahead, Charlene.
Under the overlay district that exists now, overlay districts allow you to waive those kind of things as part of an overlay district, the way those are formed and the way that they function. If you make this the underlying zoning, you lose that ability to do any of those waivers. It would have to go to the zoning board of appeals for variances, which makes it that much more difficult, and it's not one-stop shopping. One of the other things, if I can just go further, is that this, by creating this as the underlying zoning, you will automatically make a number of existing uses and sites non-conforming. And I don't know if you really want to do that. So those were some of the key issues that I saw, there are some other ones in there, but those were the two that really struck me as, hmm, you know, is that something that you really want to do? You know, the ideas to try and be more user-friendly in the community, and this, I think, to me, would be taking a big step backward. I don't think anybody anticipated this when you all were looking at this, and that's why, you know, it was wise for Ally to suggest that it be sent to council, because I think he raises some really legitimate concerns.
But does he make any recommendations?
Well, no, at this point, no, because I don't think we were asking for recommendations. I think he was at, we were asking for what impact will this have?
Yeah.
Okay, Charlene, just correct me if I'm wrong. In my reading of Adam's comments, we could make some of those dimensional variations if it's a special permit as opposed to a site plan review?
Yeah, I think you can do that.
That's, that's the way I was reading it.
Right, but that's a little more, it is, and it's a little more cumbersome in writing, it's not as smooth.
Yeah, it's a process, it's a more difficult process to go through.
It is.
And then I think the other comment that he made was a definitional comment with regard to a term that we use that is not clearly defined in the ordinance.
I actually skimmed over that one, so...
Okay, well, okay, so that was basically, that was basically the sense of his comments. Mary?
I guess for me, it would come down to the number of parcels that we really are concerned about coming forward in the future, as opposed to having a setback. So to me, it would be a balance, whether it's worth trading the overlay district and the ability to do the dimensional changes directly with our board versus a couple of parcels that may or may not have an issue five years down the line if something gets sold. So I don't know, I don't know how many, I don't know that we've done it, whether anyone has a count of how many of those parcels exist.
Well, I'm not aware of anything, and I've looked through some of Ally's work, so if I may, Mr. Chairman, I agree that I think that more study needs to be done on each and every parcel that would be affected, good, bad, or indifferent, you know, by the proposed changes, and what effect that might have on them. You know, I don't think we would be doing our due diligence to the community unless we actually really looked at, and we're, I mean, we're not talking a lot of parcels, but it's still going to be a time-consuming, you know, project to, you know, literally walk up and down and do a lot of notes and photographs and looking at Google Earth and, you know, all that kind of stuff.
Joe? You know, I noticed that, and I read it before I came down here tonight, he makes certain questions, if you will, I guess that's what he calls them. My question is, can he give us a recommendation as to what we should do to draft a document that addresses those? I mean, that's, or not at all, maybe we don't want it. But I mean, that seems to me those are our two choices.
To either get advice from him.
Get some advice from him as to how to draft the bylaw so it addresses the two things that he cautions us about here.
If I could, Jim?
Go ahead.
I think it's either, it's either you have, you keep an overlay district and have the risk that it's not mandatory, as came forward in Cumberland Farms, or you lose the ability to have those dimensional waivers on our board. So it then becomes the zoning board of appeals issue, as opposed to our issue. So I don't know that you can, I don't know that he could make a recommendation that would craft it so that we could still do the dimensional requirements. I think that's his point.
Maybe you can't do it, in other words.
You can't. It's either, if you have an overlay district, you can, you can, this board, because it's an overlay district, can make the dimensional waivers, but if it's underlying zoning, then it lies with the zoning board of appeals. So it essentially moves that function, removes that from planning board and puts it into zoning board of appeals. That was my understanding of what he said.
I concur. Yes.
Okay, anybody else have any?
I don't, I don't know if you've actually received this.
Jim, did you receive the information with regard to the Port Village District zoning?
I did, I got the whole package.
Okay.
Do you have any comments?
I don't at this time, no.
Okay, I mean, one of the things that I think that we have to maybe sort of step back and see what we're trying to accomplish here, I mean, the issue or the sort of push to have this put through came from the feeling of the zoning board at the time that we were going through the Cumberland Farms. through the Cumberland Farms debate. And the fact that, you know, basically, when we went into the Cumberland Farms issue, it was felt that the overlay district was mandatory and not voluntary. And then, as we got through the litigation, it was discovered that it was intended to be voluntary and not mandatory. So the issue that the board at that time felt was that we needed to correct that to make the overlay district requirements mandatory. Now, if the board is rethinking that before we go any further, maybe we need sort of further discussion as to whether or not that's what we want to do. And, you know, and if we do want to continue, then we need to address the comments that Adam made in, you know, in this memorandum. So what I'm thinking is that maybe it might be better for us all to think about that, put this on the agenda for the next meeting, and come back at the next meeting and let's sort of give some thought to how we want to proceed. Joe?
I think that's fine, except the only thing I would add, and I know our staff gets nervous when I start spending money, that maybe we should have Mr. Costa be here. I don't think, I don't think he's ever attended one of our meetings, and I understand, we end up paying.
It's not even, it's not even the money part of it that I'm honestly concerned with. Part of my concern at this point in time is time and hours available. I'm not your full-time planner yet. I'm still doing another job. You also are going to have two, if not three, major zoning amendments coming forward regarding marijuana, which are going to be, I think, hot topics, you know...
Especially after today's headlines.
Especially after today's headlines. And you also, you haven't even gotten to the discussion yet about green communities and the zoning changes that we're looking for there, which would provide the town a cost savings in a variety of ways and make us eligible for grant monies to help with making some of our buildings more energy efficient. So I think it's a matter of, at this point in time, for this next town meeting, which is actually only four months away, if you really think about it, you know, is this something that you want to spend a lot of time on right now for this May town meeting, or is this something that you want to put a little more time in for the next available town meeting?
Well, I think my, my feeling on that is that we're not shooting for any specific town meeting, so, but if we're going to do this, we need to do it right.
Couldn't agree more.
And if that means delaying this, then, you know, let's delay it and think it through and make sure it gets done right. But what I'm hearing here is that there may be some, you know, there have been changes in members of the board, there may be some changes in the feeling as to how we should go on this. And I know that sort of, sort of going back to the theory and making sure that the totality of the board is still sort of on board with the theory of trying to make the commercial village overlay district a mandatory zoning instead of a voluntary zoning, I think we need to sort of rethink that before we proceed. If indeed we decide that we still want to proceed in this direction, because I'm hearing some comments a little bit different tonight, then I think Joe's suggestion is a very good idea. And yes, that's going to delay it and it will probably push it beyond the cycle of this May town meeting, which, from my point of view, is fine. I mean, to address Mary's comments, I think, you know, there are vacant parcels of property in Harwich Port. What we saw with Cumberland Farms, what we saw with the new building that's being built, is that we're now into a point where there's redevelopment of existing properties that are already developed. So, you know, I think to the extent that we make this the underlying zoning, it has an impact on all properties within Harwich Port. Even though the existing developed properties, you know, would be grandfathered in, they wouldn't be grandfathered in if they go through a major redevelopment of the property and demolish the existing use and put up a new building. So what I'd like to propose, if the board is in agreement, is that we put this on the agenda for the next session just to discuss whether or not the board is still on board with, you know, proceeding in this direction. Is that everybody in agreement with that? I don't think we need a formal vote for that.
No.
Okay, then I'd like to move, are there any comments from the public on this matter before I move on to the next one? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to the next one. The next one is a proposal for a bylaw with regard to recreational marijuana. And my understanding of the concern of the board of selectmen with this is we have already processed and will be going to public hearing with an extension of the moratorium.
Yes.
We have processed and we are going to public hearing with a complete ban on the sale of recreational marijuana.
Yes.
My understanding and the concern of the board of selectmen is that should neither of these pass at public, at town meeting in May, then we are exposed with absolutely sort of no zoning to control where recreational marijuana may be sold. Therefore, the proposal that was sent out to us, that Charlene sent out, is a proposed zoning amendment for the sale of both retail and medical marijuana that would be put on the warranted town meeting following or in order after the other two zoning amendments. And if the other two zoning amendments passed, this amendment would be pulled.
Exactly.
Okay, so with that background, what I'd like to do is just ask Charlene for her analysis of this proposal, and then we'll open it up for discussion.
What I did, town council forwarded to us a copy of what Nantucket had done, and that's the second page of what's in your packet. What I then did is looked at our own bylaw and then went through to create a bylaw that would fit into our existing section. In our, going back a couple of years, the town, the planning board in the town did try to do a regulation for medical marijuana, and it did not pass, and I believe it was only by like five votes, it was a very small margin, to meet that two-thirds vote. I left the medical marijuana in there just for discussion purposes, but I think if the board feels that it would be too much to try and bring that back again with the retail marijuana, that you wouldn't need to necessarily do that. The other thing that I did is I looked at where in town I thought would be the best location, if there's going to be a best location for...
If anywhere.
Of any, if anywhere, of the retail sale of marijuana. And, you know, there was some discussion, you know, oh, stick it in the industrial zone, that's where everything goes. It's like, hey, give it to Mikey, he'll eat anything. I don't think that's a good approach. I really, I really don't think that's an appropriate, good approach. So what I've done for discussion purposes at this point is I've put it within the CV, the CH1 and the CH2 as a special permit use, that it would have to come before the planning board as a special permit granting authority. One of the criteria that I do like about this draft bylaw is that it has to be in a standalone facility, and it cannot be in a building or structure with other uses, whether it's retail, commercial, what have you, unless, of course, you do have a licensed medical marijuana center, then you could have both of those at the same location. But this would really create, it would have to be a standalone, nothing else on that property, it can't be accessory to, it can't be the primary use with an accessory use, it has to be, that is the only use on that property. So it couldn't be in any of the plazas that we have in town, you know, anything like that. It would really govern where it could be located in a standalone situation. And again, it would be by special permit. There would be a separation, a minimum separation of 500 feet, measured from the lot lines between any certified public or private school or licensed daycare center to give it, you know, to get it away from children. If you wanted to expand that 500 feet, you probably could. I don't think the Attorney General would necessarily support anything over that because I do believe 500 feet is what's in the regulations for like medical marijuana and those kind of, kind of things. So that's why I've presented it the way I have. And I also think having the uses in, in the commercial zones is that there's more, you're going to see a lot more police presence. I hate to say it that way, but I think you're going to have a lot more people paying attention to the comings and goings and what's going on than if we stick it out in the industrial zone and that kind of thing. So, you know, this would be front and center and I think would be more scrutinized, possibly. I did send this to the police chief, he was not able to attend this evening. But again, going back to whether there's recreational, we just deal with recreational or whether we also deal with the marijuana treatment centers. Medical, you know, I would leave up to you or if anybody else had any, any questions or suggestions on that.
Okay, thank you, Charlene. Before I open it up to other board members, I do have a few comments. First, with regard to whether or not we deal with both recreational and medical marijuana, it would be sort of my leaning, although I'm not hard and fast on it, that we just deal with the recreational. My understanding of the state law on medical is that that's only certain designated communities within the state, and we have not been designated as a community for a medical marijuana facility. I think Dennis is the closest one to us that has been designated.
And actually, you can't even get medical, you can get a license in Dennis, but they don't actually have a facility yet.
Okay.
And I don't know if they actually will have a facility.
Right. So, I mean, I think with regard, they do have a facility, Mike? Okay.
I, but I only know this because I have a family member who's quite ill and it was suggested that they use medical marijuana, and the closest place, I think, is Brockton, that we could actually get it if my family member decided that they wanted to do that. So that's the only reason I'm questioning whether Dennis actually has anything yet.
Okay. Well, I mean, my feel...
They may have a cultivation, but I don't know if they can sell. I know they had an illegal cultivation, but...
And so my feeling on that is that if we, you know, if we become designated, we would have time to go back and add this in. But for right now, the main issue that we have to deal with is the recreational marijuana. Now, I, Charlene, I want to thank you very much for going through the effort of developing this draft.
You're very welcome. I know at the time, the board of selectmen was very eager to get this done quickly, so...
Right, and justifiably so. I do have just some, what I think are probably pretty minor comments on this. I know you mentioned the distance of 500 feet, and that's probably what would be upheld. I mean, I would actually prefer 1,000 feet. But if 500 is all we can get, let's live with 500.
I know for adult entertainment, you can go to 1,000, but I don't think you can for marijuana.
Okay, well then, then let's stay with 500. With regard to the items that, you know, or the locations that were putting this restriction on of at least 500 feet difference, I would like to add public parks and recreational facilities.
Oh, I like that.
You know, because those are places where kids tend to congregate and families tend to congregate. So I think I would like to add that to the list that you have already included in there. And then I only had one other question, and one may just be a typo. In the use chart that you have on the second page here, under 46, you have marijuana establishment residential?
Oh, whoops, recreational.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I was assuming. That's what I was assuming, but I just wanted to check. And then...
I'm glad to know somebody's reading this.
And then, does the P under the water protection district indicate that it's permitted by right?
We have a water resource overlay district.
Yeah.
And in that, in that district, if you look at the use table, you'll see a number of uses that are special permit uses, but it's allowed by right in the water recharge area because it's not a water-intensive use. That's all that means. So the CH2 zoning district is entirely within the WR district, the water resource district. And a small portion, I think, in south Harwich of the CH1 is also in a water recharge area. So it, yes, it's allowed by right, but you still need a special permit because of the the commercial zoning that is within that. Does that make sense?
The CH1 and 2 is the underlying zoning?
Is the underlying zoning, and the water recharge is an overlay.
Oh, okay. Okay, that explains that. And that was the only questions I had. Joe?
Where did we get off the bus? I thought we were in a prohibition and voted to not sell it at all here.
Joe, what I explained before is what's going to happen is the, the extension of the, the...
The moratorium.
The moratorium is going to go to town meeting.
Oh, I understand.
We have to have a public hearing.
And so if they were to reverse it at town meeting, in other words?
If they, if they reversed it, if they revert, if town meeting did not approve
the total ban, then this would be placed, and so this would be on the warrant, but it would be after the, the extension of the moratorium and the total ban. If indeed those two pass, and we would hope that...
Then this would be indefinitely postponed, more than likely.
Then this would be postponed and not voted on at town meeting.
I missed it. Thank you.
So it's a very valid concern of the board of selectmen that if, and we all saw what happened in Brewster.
Yes.
Brewster had a ban of sale of, of recreational marijuana put to town meeting, and town meeting in Brewster rejected that ban.
They're kind of scrambling now and doing a special town meeting, from what I understand.
Yeah, and so, our having this prepared, going through the whole process and putting this to town meeting would stop that scrambling if that, the same thing does occur in Harwich.
Yeah.
You know, and what we have to realize is, in the vote on the question, you know, on the state vote, yes, Harwich voted against it, but not by an overwhelming margin. So town meeting could potentially go either way.
I'll tell you, and I've heard him speak a number of times, if you listen to Mr. Brackett and have him tell you all about it, gateway drug, blah, 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 it doesn't make, didn't take too much for him, for me to be a believer. Having said all that, I understand why now. I didn't understand that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from members of the board?
Does Jim have anything?
Yeah, Jim, do you have any comments or questions?
I feel the same. I feel the same as Joe. I can't believe we're talking about this.
Well, it's a, I think it's a backup.
It's a backup, and this will only be voted on at town meeting if indeed the extension of the moratorium is turned down and the complete ban is turned down.
Jim?
Yeah, Jim, do you have further comment?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Mary?
I was just going to clarify, if we don't do this and it fails...
It's allowed anywhere.
It's allowed anywhere, and they can go wherever retail sale of anything is permitted. So this is really our belts and suspenders so that if, if we don't get the first way, at least we're somewhat protecting ourselves.
I get it. I'm with you.
Okay. Okay, before... Okay, before I ask for further discussion on how we want to proceed, are there any comments from members of the public? Mike?
I think if you're going to vote this, if you could just add that if it is 1,000 feet, you'll make it 1,000 feet rather than keep it at 500 feet. A quick Google search, you can find 1,000 feet, but Massachusetts is a little convoluted. Most other states are 1,000 feet, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, if we do 1,000 feet and they say, no, you can only do 500.
Who they?
The Attorney General.
The Attorney General. I, I think that might be the best way to proceed, yeah.
Could we propose it in the alternative? In the, in the bylaw at town meeting?
You can't become more restrictive, but you can be less restrictive. So, if 1,000 feet is too restrictive, then it can be reduced down to 500 feet.
So, based on that, then I would be in favor of making it at 1,000 feet. And then if the Attorney General comes back and says it's too restrictive, then, yeah, we'll agree to 500.
Yeah, and we should know before then if the 1,000 is, is too much, quite honestly.
Okay, fine.
But, yeah, you can't be more restrictive on a zoning, you know, an amendment to a zoning article, but you can be less restrictive. So, it's easier to go from 1,000 to 500 than the other way.
If I could, when, do we anticipate having the public hearing on it?
Actually, Jim and I sat down and looked at this. In order to get it, you know, we weren't sure if there was going to be the need for a special town meeting. I don't know if that's been decided yet. The, if the board votes tonight to move forward with this so that it gets referred to the Board of Selectmen, it would be on their agenda for next Tuesday on the consent agenda. And then we could do a public hearing. I believe we figured out the, it's either the 13th or the 27th of February. I think it's the 27th.
Yeah, I, I think it was the 27th of February.
I think it was the 27th of February. So, that would be the earliest we could do it if the board voted tonight. Otherwise, you're going into March and that's when you get, get a little dicey on things.
She starts to close in.
Thank you. It does. It does.
Okay, any other discussion?
Just looking online, just most of them are 1,000.
Okay.
Okay.
Just-
So, we'll change that.
That had been established.
If we can change that to 1,000.
Perfect.
So, then I guess we do need a vote in order to-
Can, can we clarify first?
Sure, sure.
So, is, is it the consensus of the board that you'd prefer just to go forward with the recreational at this point or to put both of them in there?
My desire would be just to go ahead with the recreational now. Do the other board members? How do you feel? Mary?
What I liked about doing both was if you had a, a combined use, but I don't want to make it more complicated than it needs to be. So, I'd probably lean towards just doing recreational for now.
Jim, what do you think? Sorry. Jim on the phone, Jim.
Jim Joyce?
Yeah, I'm on the phone.
We have two Jims, it's confusing now.
No, I, I mean, if, if, if we're going to move, move forward, then it's recreational.
You and I are on the same street, Kai, Jim.
I know. I know.
So, Jim, you would be in favor?
School street.
Excuse me, Jim, so you would be all right with just moving forward with the recreational?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so, so based on that, and the top I can change. So, we would be proceeding with 325-14R. And in item number one, it would read recreational marijuana establishments shall be located in standalone facilities and shall not be allowed within a building or structure containing other retail, commercial, residential, industrial, or other uses, period.
Take out the ones about, I see.
Correct.
Take out the except for locations with licensed medical marijuana center. And then item two would be a minimum separation of 1,000 feet measured between lot lines in, is required between recreational marijuana establishments and state certified public or private schools or licensed daycare centers or public parks or recreational facilities.
Yeah, I'd do private schools, comma, state licensed daycare centers.
Yep, yep.
Comma.
Comma.
Recreational facilities.
Public parks and recreational facilities.
Okay, yep.
Yep.
Agreed.
Item number three would stay the same. And then the next paragraph, recreational marijuana established, that would stay the same. Item or subparaphrase would go bye-bye. So, we would not need that. And under the proposed section 325-2, word usage, we would only retain the definition of marijuana establishment recreational.
Correct.
Medical goes away.
Medical goes away. And in the proposed changes to the table, it would only be item number 46, changing residential to recreational.
Did, one clarification, did we change the 500 under sub, under R2? Did we change 500 to 1,000?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Yes, we did. And so, item 47 is going to be deleted.
Correct.
Okay.
Ed, did you have a question?
In, in developing this-
Excuse me, Ed, do you just want to introduce yourself for the record?
I'm Ed McManus, resident of Harwich. In considering this, this ordinance, it's, it's clear it's aimed at the resale sales, retail sales portion of recreational marijuana. However, it appears the Cannabis Control Commission are going to be issuing three different sets of permits for retail sales, for cultivation, and for testing facilities. And in cultivation, they are developing separate set of regulation, regulations for what is being referred to as craft cultivation.
Which kind, please?
Craft.
Craft cultivation.
Thank you.
A craft beer.
Well, now, it's, it's for, for small, basically small sale growers to grow on their, set aside 100 square feet in the middle of their organic farm. For those farmers, it would be financially a game changer to the finances of rate, having a small organic farm. But in, in any event, I think we should look at potentially if you decide whether or not you want to allow those or not as a use in town. If, as I understand it, if you don't pass an ordinance banning it or controlling, setting standards on it, it'd be available in any zone where a similar sort of use would be allowed.
That's actually included in the ban article.
Okay.
But not in this.
So, we should.
But, I mean-
I don't know how to do that.
Well, my question is, are we already including it by the very broad definition that you've included? Where it says a mari, when we define marijuana establishment-
Oh, we do.
-recreational.
Yeah.
We say a marijuana cultivator, independent testing laboratory, product manufacturer, et cetera, et cetera.
Yep.
Okay.
So, I think we are covering that by the broad, the broad wording of the definition.
So, but are you setting up different zones in, in terms of the different uses? Because, you know-
It'd maybe be helpful if we read the definition. Marijuana establishment recreational, a marijuana cultivator, independent testing laboratory, marijuana production manufacturer, marijuana retailer, or any other type of licensed marijuana related business as defined in General Laws, Chapter 94G, Section 1. So, it all falls under the same definition and as proposed, it would be allowable only by special permit in the commercial zoning districts.
Okay. So, you'd, you'd, you'd want a, what's this, essentially a commercial testing laboratory to be located in a, a, a commercial district, not an industrial district, you know?
I don't know how we would separate those out.
Well, they, they, they will be receiving different separate licenses.
But it's all defined under the same definition, though. I mean, you'd have to literally break out the definitions.
You'd have to have three definitions.
You'd have to have three definitions and-
And three different zones.
You know, I, I did this very quickly based on the information that I had available to me at the time, so I don't know how.
Yeah, it's, well, that's, that's probably the hallmark of what's happening with this. In, in meeting with the members of, some of the, a couple of members of the Cannabis Control Commission on the Policy Committee at the Municipal Association, the speed at which they're having to generate all this is astounding, given, I mean, we met, we met with them the beginning of November. They were due to have their draft regulations out the beginning of December and after our meeting at that beginning of November, they were going back to hold a board meeting to hire their first employee. They had been doing everything on their own up until then without any budget. But I think their draft regulations are out. I don't know, I haven't yet perused a copy of them. I think it would be important to, to have a, either, it's Charlene, somebody peruse them or, or at least give a call to, oh, I forget, I'll get his name. Well, there's a, one of the fellows up at MMA who has been pointed to keep on top of, of this and, and ask some of those questions about how the distinction between the different licenses are being handled in, in ordinances. It would be interesting to see.
But, excuse me, but Ed, isn't that only relevant if we want to split up the different type of uses into different zones?
Well, presumably, you know, but, you know, somehow restricting a testing facility to only commercial zones seems not the, the sort of use you want in those commercial zones. Testing laboratory makes a very good use in an industrial zone, given that it has, you know, it's, it's not open to the public. It has no, no public coming and going. Why would you want to take a place up on Main Street in Harwichport or along 13, 137 in East Harwich as the establish, place for an establishment of, of, of facility that's not going to be interacting with the rest of the commercial activity of the zone?
We've had talk-
Yeah.
About Great Western Road.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and that would be probably a very good location or Queen Anne, for that matter.
Yep.
You know? But, and then for cultivation, you know, you want, somehow having cultivation, craft cultivation, and, and that's my question, is, is are they setting up separate regulations for commercial cultivation, which will, for the most part, as the industry has advanced, take place in basically large warehouse structures? Whereas craft cultivation is going to be, regulations are being developed, so it would be done outside in-
In your backyard.
Well, not in your backyard because you have to have a, a larger area. So, but somebody with a three, four acre small farm would be able to set up a plot in the middle of it, which will, will meet, from what I understand, are the type, type of setbacks that they're, they're talking to, talking about. So, anyway, those are things to, to consider if you, if you are taking up an ordinance to have, has, has, have as a fallback in, on providing controls on the establishment of those sorts of facilities in town.
Thank you, Ed. Mary?
So, one question, if we take a vote on this as it exists tonight to refer it back to Board of Selectmen, it's going to come back for a public hearing. Is that a decision we can, if, if over the next month we find out more information and we, we feel we should split those into three separate zoning districts, we should be able to do that, I believe, after, when we vote after a public hearing? Or am I incorrect in that?
It, it does muddy the waters because the definition of marijuana establishment recreational is going to change.
Correct.
So.
But isn't that the point of a public hearing, is to get feedback on it? I'm, I'm asking.
No, it is, but in, in Massachusetts, as I said in my interview for this position, the, the zoning and planning laws in Massachusetts are quite archaic and-
Than every place else.
Yeah. And once an advertisement is done for the, the legal notice, that's what you have to put, you, there's very little wiggle room to amend a zoning article once it's already been advertised, except at the floor of town meeting. You can't tweak it before the hand. At least that's what I've been taught in, in my 30 years of, of doing zoning amendments.
So, if this wasn't getting pulled, we would have to be prepared with those changes?
Right. And it could be considered more restrictive if you're breaking it out and it gets very confusing to anybody on the floor of town meeting to try and understand, you know, what, what the changes are.
This is a moving target, obviously, and I think to Mary's point, I think the language is broad enough in there to cover this backup plan, for lack of better words, that we're putting forward so that we don't end up in Brewster's situation. Because as Ed explained, this is such a moving target and legislation, they're still messing around with this and they're, and they're just coming up with the rules. They're really opening it up for towns to be able to appeal and opening up for, for our win in a legal battle over this. So, we could talk about this forever, but we, time is of the essence at this point and, and we need to get this done so that we can have something for town meeting. Ultimately, we may be challenging it later, but.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mike. We, we do need to proceed with something. If indeed our complete ban is turned down by town meeting and this is approved by town meeting, and as this issue develops further, Ed, there are further definitions with regard, we can always go back to town meeting in the following year and amend this in order to further define the separate uses. So, I would propose that we proceed with, with this proposed ordinance as Charlene has sort of edited what is in front of us. And I would like to call for a motion to proceed with this and to send this to the Board of Selectmen for their consideration.
So, movements, Jim.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Go ahead.
Proceedurally, can you second it for discussion?
Yeah, wait, second, and then let's have discussion.
Discussion, for part two.
Yeah.
The separation of 1,000 feet, should we put churches also?
I would not object to that if that's the feeling of the board.
Instead of it's, there's another term for church.
Religious.
Religious facilities.
Religious facility. Start it out there. Looking at other bylaws that are out there. They have that in there.
If he needs to, I have a second for his amendment.
Okay.
So, now it's going to be just reading the state licensed daycare centers, public parks, recreation facilities, and religious facilities.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor, we have a proposed amendment to that motion. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. We have a proposed amendment to that motion. Do we have a second to the amendment?
Second to the amendment.
Okay, let's, uh, first vote on the amendment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
You need, it needs to be a roll, roll call vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, Charlene. Al?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
All vote aye. Joe?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Now, uh, I would like to go back to the original motion as amended. Uh, is there any further discussion on that? Okay, I would like to call for a vote. Al?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
I vote aye. Joe?
Aye.
Jim Joyce?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. So, we'll refer this to the Board of Selectmen for their consideration, assuming that they're in agreement. We will then schedule a public hearing. And then we'll schedule a public hearing right away, Mike. Thank you. Okay.
This is the fastest I've ever put a zoning article together. It was like, whoa.
Okay, well, now we have another zoning article. Uh, green communities, and what I would like is to have Charlene just give us a little bit of background on this.
Just a brief background on this. We've actually had a couple of presentations made by Seth Pickering, who's the southeastern regional coordinator for the Green Communities Program. Um, what the Green Communities, uh, provides for, it's a designation, um, of communities. And if you go to the fourth page of the handout that I provided to you, it shows the different communities that have adopted, um, the Green Communities designation and have been designated as Green Communities. Right now, on the Cape, only Province Town, Truro, Harwich, and Mashpee are designated Green Communities. What the Green Communities provides for is, um, a variety of, um, programs, grant programs, that we would be eligible for. When you become a Green Community, you automatically get a grant, a pot of money to use towards reducing your carbon footprint and reducing your use of, of energy sources. Um, if you go to the second page, slide five, um, this indicates what you need to do to go through the program. It provides grants to qualified communities to fund energy efficiency initiatives, renewable energy, and innovative projects. As part of that, there are five criteria that town needs to abide by. One is adopting as of right citing and designations of either, um, uh, generation, R and D, or manufacturing of, of energy efficient, um, sites. What I've provided to you is a large-scale photovoltaic bylaw that is commonly used in most of the communities. Um, what I don't have yet is where I would propose that be located. I have ideas on that. Um, you would also have to adopt expedited permitting application. This proposed bylaw is by right. It's not a special permit, but it does list the criteria that you would need to go through in order to be granted, to cite it where you want to cite it. It is by right, but it still needs to go through a review process. Um, and the proposal would be to have it, um, be similar to site plan review that you already have. Um, and to also continue to have the planning board be that, um, permit granting authority, but it's not a special permit. It's a by right, as long as they meet all these criteria. Uh, the other is to establish an energy use baseline with a plan to reduce the baseline by twenty percent in five years. Um, we, right now, because we're down a staff person and, um, getting that might actually be the more difficult part, but we do already have, um, through the, um, Green Communities, there's what's called a Mass Energy Insight website, where you can track all your energy usage. Um, I was the Green Communities Coordinator in Truro. Um, I'm very familiar with that program, how it works, and, and how to, to do the baseline. It's just a matter of actually having the time to do that baseline. And, uh, criteria number four is, um, purchasing of only fuel-efficient vehicles. That is only for vehicles that are not used for, like DPW use. Police and fire vehicles do not have to be energy efficient. It's basically if, um, if you look out our window, we have a fleet of used Crown Vics that are being used for departments. The idea is to get away from that because those are not fuel-efficient vehicles. But we do have an SUV out there that is used by engineering, which would more than likely qualify as an energy efficient vehicle. So, it's not like we have to have vehicles, you know, a little smart car that you can't put anybody in and gets, you know, sixty miles per gallon. That's not what we're talking here. Um, we're talking sedans that can get as low as even, say, twenty-four miles per gallon. I'm just kind of throwing out that out there. It's, it's not the exact, but. And then the final is, and in some communities, this has been the, um, the more difficult thing to get through, but as the building code has changed, we're getting closer to this anyway, is the requirement that new residential, um, construction, and when I say new residential construction, I mean a brand-new home, not an addition, um, just a brand-new home. Um, it would need to meet what's called the stretch code, which is a more energy efficient building code, and also new commercial and industrial construction, but we're talking buildings, I believe it's a hundred thousand square feet. I know of only two buildings in town that are anywhere near that, and those are both schools. So, that's kind of a very brief overview. I hope you will look through this handout. Um, I'm not looking for a vote tonight, um, because this is a lot to absorb. But what I have drafted based on what I had prepared in Truro is the, excuse me, the large-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic bylaw that would, um, outline what would need to be included if you were going to do this type of project in this community. What, um, other communities have done is actually cited this on town-owned property. Um, Truro, for example, did it on their cap landfill, so it, it was actually a town-sponsored program. So, that, it would be by right, if the town ever decided to go out for an RFP, to do additional photovoltaic arrays on the, um, the, the cap landfill. They could do that and it would be a by-right project through this review process. What this also does allow for is other areas where you can do large photovoltaic arrays, and then it would be a special permit, but not in the zoning overlay district that we could create. And my suggestion would be that we do it over our own existing property, so that we get the benefit of the energy that's created. Not a hundred percent benefit, because they need to make some, some money and.
Is that facility we have at the dump now, is that a ground-mounted solar?
Yes, it is.
Photovoltaics?
Yes. Say that three times fast. And the other thing is, we only need to provide an area large enough to accommodate two hundred and fifty kilowatts, which is approximately an acre. I'm suggesting we probably want to have a little bit bigger overlay than that if we ever want to expand our, our array. It's a very.
Okay.
Reader's Digest of this.
Okay, thank you very much, Charlene. I mean, I think, in my mind, the biggest question is the where question. And from what I hear, you're talking.
I'm sorry.
The where. Um, and from what I understand, you're talking about this to be basically only on town property.
Yes.
As opposed to.
That would be my recommendation, based on my familiarity with other communities that have done this. And it's, and it's worked well.
Okay, as opposed to allowing, uh, you know, a private landowner to have, you know, this type of facility on their land, you know, by right. Okay, uh, I just wanted to clarify that to make sure I was understanding it correctly. Mary, did you have a question?
My only question was, um, through you to Charlene, how much, um, undeveloped land is left on that parcel at, at the transfer station there is?
Yeah, a lot, huge.
Okay.
Yeah, I wouldn't suggest it be the whole thing. It would be located next to the existing facilities.
As you see it, Mary, as you see it, it runs way back around to the right, which you don't see.
Right, yeah, it, it's quite large.
Okay.
Yes, it does run next to the bike trail. And further on in these pages, there's, there's slides that explain each of the by-right citing, expedited permitting, and that kind of stuff. If the board is so inclined, I would work further on this document and also look at, um, the, the, our, our, um, our zoning map and figure out where to create an overlay district for this. And try and get this done in a, in a timely manner.
I, I think that would be very helpful, Charlene. Now, um, and just before I ask the board whether they agree with me, are there any comments from the public on this matter? Okay, Charlene, on the timing on this, I assume that we would want to get this to a town meeting in, uh, this year?
Yes, um, on this one, um, unlike the marijuana, I mean, yes, we need to do this in a timely manner. So, I would hope to have a finished document, not at the next meeting for you, but certainly by the beginning of, of, um, February. So, you would be looking at a March public hearing or even maybe early April. Um, I don't know whether there's going to be, well, we are going to have a special. If for some reason this needs to be included in the special, um, you know, that may be a way to do it along with the stretch code, so that it doesn't get lost in the larger picture.
Okay, thank you. So, um, Mr. Ed, I don't think we need to vote on this, do we, Charlene?
No, just some guidance if people are.
Just the consensus of the board to have Charlene, you know, continue to develop this with regard to the location being on town-owned property and come back to us as soon, as soon as you can, uh, with a revised zoning ordinance with regard to that.
It's another seven hundred and twenty-three things you're doing.
Is that all you're doing, Charlene? Then you have plenty of time. We'll have a race, Mike, to see whether you could add more or we could add more. Okay, then I'd like to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the advisory opinions with regard to the, um, the Harwich, uh, what is it?
Historic District and Historical Commission.
Right, yes, I never get that straight.
Neither do I.
I, there was a list sent out in the packet.
Yes.
Which I have right in front of me. Does anybody on the board have any comments with regard to the list that was sent out?
And also, if, if I might.
Sure, go ahead, Charlene.
I leave it entirely up to you, you know, as, as your new planner. I just want some guidance from you. Do you want to see all of these, or do you only want to see ones which I think you might want to see?
Um.
Okay.
I would like.
You would like to see them all, okay.
And, and I will say, in my dual role, I would appreciate having comments and feedback for my other meetings. So, um, I can speak to any of these if people have quick questions. They are all demo-delay bylaw. And yes, the second one, twenty eighteen oh-two, is a hundred percent demo.
And what do you do? You, you, if, if you, if you vote, you people vote to put it off the year?
Correct. So, the only vote the Historic Commission has, so any building that is a hundred years of, of age or older, that is on our hundred-year list, has to come for a notice of intent, intent for any full demolition or partial demolition, and a partial demolition includes the removal of a railing. So, um, anything is included in that. So, the only option the Historic Commission currently has is to, um, deny the notice of intent, which is a twelve-month delay on demolition. Um, otherwise, we, uh, if we vote to approve the notice of intent, then they can proceed.
Can I ask?
Go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Mary, under the demolition delay bylaw, would it be either somebody buying the prop, buying the property and retaining the house or physically moving it? Is that an option too, just under the demolition delay bylaw?
So, I don't know that removing it is technically demoing anything. I'd have to look at the.
You know, just if somebody wanted to relocate it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Relocating it, I don't know that that would, um, necessarily be under our, under the definition of demolition. So, you probably could move it and that would be.
And satisfy your.
And satisfy the.
Because I know in, in Chatham, where I live, um, I know there have been a couple of those where, um, a house has been for demolition delay and in, you know, and they found somebody who would take it for a buck.
So, they.
Moving it costs a boatload of money, but, you know.
The Historic Commission does not have the funds to assist in that.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 no. I'm not suggesting that.
And that, so, but that was actually raised by, uh, a person at one of our meetings, was whether we, whether we did provide assistance to do that or whether we could buy a house and move it, and we don't have the funds currently to do that.
But if John Smith saw that this house was available on the demolition delay and they said, oh, I really like this and wanted to move it, because I actually had a neighbor who did move one of those.
Yes.
And again, it's one of those ocean nav.
Yes.
Those homes that trying to tear them down and.
Ground.
Okay, uh, anybody else have any comments or questions? Hey, uh, Charlene, do we need to take any action?
No, unless you would like to.
Um, I, I don't think we have anything that we have any major concerns about.
Okay.
So, I think we could just, but thank you very much for providing it to us. Now, uh, we were also provided with the agenda for the January thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Does anybody have any comments on any of the items that are in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals? Jeff?
Can you give me some indication as to two seventeen thirty-eight, Mr. Cuddy?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we've had some struggles with Mr. Cosby over the years as to the use of that property.
What this is, is, um, as you may recall, um, there was a property on Austin Road that had stockpiled a bunch of materials for the gas project, and that was a big no-no. Um, and they applied, but by the time it got to them, they were done. Um, so that's now being restored. So, as part of the, the, the process of doing the work that the, uh, gas company needs to do, they need someplace to stockpile their, um, materials. This originally was opened on the twenty-seventh of December. There were concerns raised by one of the abutters regarding the storage of asphalt. I'm not, you know, used that, I'm not exactly sure why they're even having to store asphalt on the site. And so, they, they did continue it and, uh, and are seeking, um, input from, um, the Board of Health, whether it's a health issue, um, and also, um, engineering, and I believe DPW. I had gotten this before the meeting on the twenty-seventh, and I, um, provided a written opinion, just from me as the interim planner, indicating that the use should be strictly temporary and it should only be for those materials used for the construction. Nothing should be brought, brought back. At least, I'm pretty sure that's what I did.
Did you see anything as to where on Hall's path he's going to do that, only because we've had some struggles with him.
It's the, the driveway off of thirty-nine.
Yeah, I know.
That goes by Jay Hannan's house right there with the missile and.
And you go down, and there's four lots.
I'm not sure exactly which it is.
We established four lots because his daughter was an applicant.
I'm not sure which, I've not seen the plan, but there is a designated area. I don't think it's way down. I know that when, um, Paula Champagne was still here, she and I met with Mr. Cuddy down at the site and we said, you need approvals if you're going to do this. And, you know, here are the areas, and we pointed out high areas, not down in the pit, where these should be stored. So, as not to disturb growth that had been. So, I don't know. I know he did start this without getting his approval from, um, the proper approvals. But it is a temporary use and he has now gone back to get his, his approvals.
Okay.
But I'm not exactly sure where on the.
With this gentleman.
Okay, any, Jim?
So, this is, this is Jim. I, I want to comment on this.
Go right ahead.
Yeah, I mean, what, I mean, why would, why would he be allowed to do this and nobody else be allowed to do it? I mean, why couldn't we just have people storing whatever they want, wherever they want?
Do you want me to field that?
Yeah, I mean...
Just briefly, you can get a temporary use permit. Whether you're granted that permit or not is another issue.
Right, and this is going in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals, so it's going to be the Zoning Board of Appeals, which will, which will make the determination whether that temporary use can occur.
You know, if this board would like to say that, you know, okay, the temporary use is okay, but it needs to be in a, you know, controlled area, no products, you know, taken out like asphalt. Apparently, they were digging up, you know, cutting out asphalt and bringing that asphalt to the property, and it's like, no, that should be shipped wherever you're going to dispose of it properly, not stockpiled here, you know, that kind of thing.
That's right.
There's also issues down in there about owners unknown.
Well, we can't get in...
Well, I know, we're not going to get involved with that, but that's, that's part of what's, what does he own? And what part of those lots down in there are owners unknown? And it's a combination of both. We spent a lot of time on this particular piece of property a few years ago.
Okay, but that's not the issue that's in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals. So I guess the question becomes, do we, as the planning board, want to make comments to the Zoning Board of Appeals? Or, and make input into their decision?
Mr. Chairman, if I may...
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
The only thing I think we should tell him is to make sure where Zero Hall's Path is, where he's going to store this stuff, okay? Because...
Well, there is a map and parcel. Zero is just what the, they didn't give it a street number, so it's just considered zero. So the map and parcel is very specific, as map 86, parcel B7.
I got you. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Jim, do you have any other comment?
No more comments, no.
Okay. So then, if there are no more comments on the Zoning Board of Appeals' agenda, I'd like to move on to the next item, which is signatures for Registry of Deeds in Land Court. Charlene, have you gotten all the signatures that you...
Jim actually came in the other day to sign, but the letter wasn't done yet. And Jim, if you haven't gotten the email, it is completed. So when you're back in town, come on up and see Elaine. This is so that...
I'll be fine. I'll be in Monday.
Perfect. That's perfect. Actually, no, no.
Monday's a holiday.
We're not open.
Monday we're off.
Yeah, Monday's a holiday, Jim.
Monday's a holiday.
Okay, well, I'll Tuesday work.
That's perfect. That's perfect. But, yeah, in order to endorse definitive plans and rescission plans and that kind of thing, they need a signature on file, so we are set with that.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to the next item, review of revised hearing and meeting schedule. That was passed out to us in the package. And the main change from what we have done in the past, which I am in total agreement with, is that we don't designate certain dates for hearings, but we have hearings when there is a need for a hearing. And so Charlene has created a calendar, which basically just states our hearing slash meeting dates. And at those meetings, we could have public hearings or we could not have public hearings, depending on what the applicant load is.
Exactly. And I know in the past, there has been, you know, some issues that when an application comes in, we're getting really close to the 65 days in which the board has to hold a hearing. And if you have a definitive subdivision plan that already went through a preliminary, your timeline has shrunk, so it really squeezes you as to the time in which you have to act. So I think the sooner we can get a public hearing on a meeting is, we're better off, and the applicant's better off.
So are there any other comments on the revised meeting and hearing schedule? Jim, do you have any comments on the schedule?
I had to get off mute. No, no problem.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving next to the minutes of the December 12th, 2017 meeting. Does anybody have any comments on this?
I didn't see it.
I didn't have them.
They were emailed to us.
They were, I emailed them out.
Okay.
You can just, we can put it on the next agenda.
Yeah, if people haven't seen them as yet, let's just defer that and put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
Now I want to go to the next item on the agenda. Is there any old business that anybody wants to bring up for further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Now I'll go on to briefings and reports, and I will give the first briefing. And that is with regard to the Community Preservation Committee, which will be meeting this Thursday night at 6:00 p.m. in this room. And we are going to be doing our debate with regard to the applications and have discussions with regard to the potential funding of all 16 applications. And potentially, depending on where the board sits, we may have votes on any or all of the applications. So you're all invited to attend the meeting. Jeff?
Do you have enough money to...
That's going to be one of our discussions. I mean, one of the things that has happened is through the efforts of our new chairman, Dave Nixon, there has been some money that has not been used from previous applications that has now come back into the pot. So we now have, it's my understanding, a little bit over $3 million. Now, I still don't know whether or not that's sufficient to fund all of the applications to the full amount.
If I might, it's not.
Go ahead.
There was a public hearing held last night. The Finance Committee presented the capital plan to the Board of Selectmen. And at the very back of that document is a breakdown of the requests that came in and the funding that's available. There are all, the, one of the Harbor requests, I believe, is not going to be going forward, so that's out of the picture in the pot. So that reduces it. And what Mr. Clark, the town administrator, was asked to do was to make recommendations on funding and allocation. So I believe all, minus the Harbor Master one, all would be funded fully as requested, based on what he has come up with, except for two of the housing ones. One is the Housing Trust originally asked for $500,000. I think that's now to $340,000. And the Housing Authority asked for, I'm going to get the number wrong, $425,000, I think, or whatever the number was, to help with buy-down of four houses. And at this point, his recommendation for spending is for a buy-down for one home for this year. And if they're successful, then they can come back the next year, so. So there is enough money to fund projects, not, two of them not in complete whole, but...
In another life, I own Capital Outlet.
Yeah.
And in our final...
And that's what I'm referring to.
Yeah, we had a whole series of them that were CPC-designated.
Yes.
That is, that's where the funding was going to come from.
Yes.
And those are the ones you've just been talking about? That's why I asked the question. Thank you.
That's what I'm referring to.
Which one's the largest one?
What do you mean?
Uh, the, oh, boy. I've seen it so many...
The largest one is Hinkley's Pond.
It is Hinkley's Pond, I think, yeah.
Yeah, that's like $600 and some odd thousand dollars.
$625, I think.
$625 with...
I think it was five and...
Yeah, some coming from free cash, some coming from other...
Well, Charlene, let me just ask you a question. Has Chris then, has Chris then removed the, you said, the Harbor Master application?
It's still in there.
It's still in there.
Yeah, but I, my understanding is they're not moving forward with requesting that money. I could be wrong, but that was my understanding at the presentation last night.
Procedurally, the application has been submitted, and isn't it the Community Preservation's job to sort of proceed on the evaluation, unless the town is, you know, is pulling back the application?
I can't answer that.
Okay, well, anyway, we'll probably get an answer on Thursday night.
Chris Clark will be at the meeting Thursday night.
Okay, good.
I'm not sure if I'm going to be there at the Finance Committee, because I'm getting...
Develop a split personality.
I am a Gemini, so...
Okay, so anyway, the meeting is going to be Thursday night at 6:00, and you're all invited to attend. Are there any other briefings or reports? Okay, hearing no, and no other business?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to adjourn in a second. Any discussion? All those of...
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we need to do this by a...
No, actually, you don't technically need to vote to adjourn either, so...
But we always do. It's fun.
Still likes to.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, thank you, Jim, for participating.